All right, I've called to order the regular town council meeting December 18th, 2025, 7:00 PM. First thing, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the back of the United States where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next being called.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Gary Shuck.
Present.
Lindsay Washman.
Here.
Roger Faust.
Here.
Chad Glade.
Here.
Okay, I need to amend the agenda. Need to remove an old business. Section D, the asset purchase agreement for Lapel's gas utility asset. There are some documents not ready. I'm gonna make a motion to amend the agenda to remove Agent D from old business.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, public comment. Concerns for anyone, has any?
Good evening. My name is John Michael Bryant. I'm a homeowner here in Lapel, and this week I filed a federal civil rights complaint in the US District Court of Southern Indiana against the town of Lapel and Chief Kelly Nazer-Rotten. I'm here tonight for two reasons. I'm here to put on public record what I allege actually happened and to address directly the false and misleading statements from the chief made in his written statement against my complaint. What should have been a straight hope, a straightforward project to replace a rotten, termite-infested shed and repairing a storm-damaged fence turned into what I allege is a pattern of intimidation, constitutional rights violations, and stonewall. My federal civil rights complaint under Section 42 USC 1983 alleges, among other complaints, Fourth Amendment violation for entering and remaining on my residential property after consent was revoked without a warrant or exigent circumstances and First Amendment retaliation tied to my complaints, speech, and public record requests. Before filing, I sent the town a notice of intent to sue and gave opportunity to resolve this without litigation. I received no contact, no resolution. What I did receive was a response from the chief and, in what is my view, omits key facts and attempts to reframe what is unlawful intrusion as routine. In August, an inspection incident, the central issue that the chief left out during the inspection at my home on August 27th, Chief Nazer-Rotten came onto my property with the inspector. Here's the constitutional heart of the matter. I revoked consent. I told the chief to leave unless he had a warrant. He refused and remained on my property. This is not a minor detail. That is the entire issue. In his written response, he claims he was there only to simply stand by because banning engineering requested police presence. He stayed in a grassy area plainly visible from the roadway, suggesting he was not on my property. He was not conducting a search or an investigation, and it does not include that I ordered him to leave and he stayed. Those claims do not match my home surveillance and video shows. The video shows him entering and remaining in my yard while I was telling him to leave. Immediately after the chief and the inspector left, I contacted Matt Wood, the president of the planning commission, and asked, "Have you ever requested police presence for an initial inspection?" His exact words were, "No. Not for an initial inspection, only for residents that have caused problems or are facing fines." So, the town's own permitting leadership told me this was not a standard practice. The chief's justification relies on the alleged request for banning engineering. So I'm putting these questions on the record, chief. Who made that request? When was it made? By what method? Where's the email, call log, dispatch note, memo, any record documented in it? I submitted public record requests seeking exactly that type of documentation and received nothing. If there is no record, then the town is effectively asking the public to accept "trust me" as a basis for the police entering residential property. That's not acceptable. As part of a broader pattern, this didn't start in August. It started in April when I went to town hall asking permitting questions about my property, and instead of being helped, the police were called. Remember, Gary? The chief later characterized that encounter as not a law enforcement activity, which meant no body cam, no written report, despite the officer being dispatched. After I continued to assert my rights and ask questions, the town issued a zoning citation against me on August 14th. After the inspection on August 27th, the town then issued another violation on August 29th, finding me $25 a day. What are the citizens supposed to do? I reach out, I email, I submit complaints, I file public record requests, and I get stonewalled. I filed a formal complaint and I made record requests. I submitted ARPA request number 25981 on September 18th, 2025, disciplinary records related to every single police officer. I yet to receive it. The town's attorney refused to communicate me based on the claim that I had spoken with an attorney. I told him multiple times I would be pursuing this process. He refuses to speak to me. What I'm here to ask the council to do, not here for theatrics, I'm here for accountability. Acknowledge the core facts of the issue. A uniformed police officer entered and remained on private residential property after a homeowner revoked his consent. I demanded that he let without a warrant or exigent circumstances, and then he omitted it from his report. I also ask you, order an independent review of the chief's conduct and his complacency and accuracy of his response on my complaint. Third, enforce compliance with ARPA and ensure that my pending record requests, including request number 25981, are answered as the law requires. And lastly, adopt clear policies training the prohibit law enforcement to engage remaining on the curtilage of a home without a warrant, exigent circumstances, or ongoing voluntary consent. I didn't move to Lapel looking for a fight. I moved here to start a home with my family and my extended family. I wanted to replace old beat-up buildings and the old decrepit fence on my property after the tornado came and ruined our town. But instead, I was treated like a problem that had to be controlled. This is now in federal court. The financial and reputation risk will not fall on the contractors of banning engineering. It will not fall on the town council. It falls on the taxpayers. You have a choice. Continue to defend a version of events that conflict video evidence or insist on candor and correction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We will move on. I'll let Chad change that mic out.
Thank you, IT guys.
I just thought the wind came in.
Oh, we have no presentations. New business, reorganization oversight committee appointments. We have four appointments. One will be a town resident. Three will be appointed by the town council. Either members of the town or the town council. Anyone on board having questions?
No, that was one of the things that was outlined in the cooperation agreement. So we just need to pick out some people to do it.
I will first nominate Teresa Eppert. Welcome.
Well, I'll second that.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
What are you doing?
I'm trying to figure out what's causing the noise.
You mean beside me?
Who's IT?
Don't do that.
Breathe in and the lights will head there.
Obviously, that storm front's coming through. That must be thunder.
Coming indoors. Wait till that freeze flash hits. We're in trouble.
Oh.
This is almost as bad as Chad.
I got it now?
Very technical.
Does anyone else have anyone they'd like to nominate? I will nominate Gary Shuck.
I'll second that.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary. Vote for yourself.
I gotta vote for myself. Yes.
Lindsay. Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
One more?
Mm-hmm.
I would personally like to see Tyler Prater. So I'm gonna nominate Tyler Prater and hope he can even be on that committee. I like Tyler.
I'll second that.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Lindsay, do you want to be on this committee?
Sure.
I'll nominate Lindsay.
Fireboard's done.
That's right. Your guts are on ya. You do.
Do I have a second? Second. Sorry.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Theaters of interest. We had Randy Ford. And Olsia West.
So we, Lindsey would like to speak. Yeah, so I think both are great nominations. Um, we were kind of working on a different appointment for Olsia, so we're gonna wait for hers. So I would nominate Randy Ford to take the VDA position that we have for now, or well.
Now.
This current position.
Yes. I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
We have the Klein Peters Consulting Group LLC Income Survey Technical Assistance Contract.
Good evening, everyone. The town met with Mike Klein Peter of Klein Peter Consulting Group. He's our grant writer. Dan Cutshaw, Mr. Cutshaw's with us tonight, our engineer, and Jared Hall, our financial advisor with Chrome, about pursuing an Office of Community and Rural Affairs or OCRRA grant in 2026. We have many improvements we need for our wastewater system, and the OCRRA grants are for up to $750,000. Um, there are two things we need to do to prepare for this opportunity. First, we need to conduct an income survey. Second, we need to conduct an environmental review. Those two documents are before you tonight for approval. They total $9,000. These are necessary. Your approval would be necessary for Mr. Klein Peter to start to put our package together. The OCRCA calendar is not yet available, but once it becomes available, Mr. Klein Peter will be attending our meetings and keeping us updated on our progress and on pursuit of those, uh, of that grant. So I would request your approval of the two contracts for Klein Peter Consulting Group. Thank you.
And they total $9,000?
Yes.
The total? I will make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, now we have, uh, resolutions 2025-10 through 25-14. Fifteen? Uh, fifteen, something else. Authorizing, resolution 2025-10 is authorizing transfer of funds. Teresa, would you like to speak on that?
This resolution is authorizing the transfer of $37,000 from the SRO fund to the general fund. As you guys know, we receive money from the school, um, for our SO, SRO officer because they have a grant, and we pay him his salary out of the general fund. So this is transferring the salary portion from the SRO fund to the general fund to cover his expenses.
Motion to approve.
Second. Gary.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Who was the school resource officer?
Noah Nibbins. Huh? Is it Nibbins?
Yeah.
Noah Nibbins.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. Thanks.
Noah, like in the R.
It's not right.
Okay, resolution 2025-11, additional appropriations.
Okay. All right, so, back to the SRO officer. We transferred the money, um, over to the general fund. Yeah, three different things that, other things that were paid off, the general fund that get paid with everybody else's. Uh, one was dues, one was his phone. I mean, I can't remember the other one right now. I think it, oh, no, well, we've already transferred that, but, uh, these all add up. Each were $500. I think it was a portion of utilities. Uh, each are $500, so that's what the first three were, 500. The fourth one for $40,000 is for planning services. We did not budget the $15,000 in planning services for last year. I, I talked to Brian, and we just went with 40,000. I think it ended up, we ended up using 13,000 of the 40, so it'll go back into the general fund. We just want to be safe and sorry. I didn't pay, I had some trouble with some bills that did not look right, and I've been working with them for the last probably two months, trying to get them straightened out and making sure where the charges were supposed to go. And some of them ended up being, uh, sewer and gas, uh, portions that, um, were from January to July. So we got them all figured out. Like I said, I only used about 13,000 of it instead of the 40. MVH was 23,000. That all went to labor. If y'all remember, we had pretty rough spring. Now we're having snow, and we haven't had this much snow and coldness for a while. Most of it was used up during the tornado, so we were, uh, 23,000 short, so that's what that's for. The continuing ed police, $5,400. They received a grant from South Madison Community Foundation for their shields, or rifle plates. So that was not budgeted last year because we didn't know we were gonna get it, so it had to be budgeted. So that's what that $5,400. Now the fun one. The Police Vehicle Replacement Fund, and you'll have to bear with me here a minute because I want to explain each one of them. Okay, the Vehicle Replacement Fund is set up to, um, pay, it's where the funds go to pay for the outfits and the money that we make off of sales of old vehicles. So, we had money in there to cover the Tahoe outfit, which was $13,500. But we, we don't, we don't budget it the year before because we don't know if we're gonna get a new vehicle or not. So that's 13,500 of it. When, uh, Officer Petty wrecked his truck, uh, we found out that American Eagle had never billed the Crossroads Bank to get their money for Petty's outfit back in 2022. So, they called us, we got ahold of American Eagle, know they had never received the money, but Crossroads still had the money. So they sent us the money so we could pay it instead of them paying them. That was $17,801.91. Then we received the insurance money from Petty's truck, which was $33,489.17. Then we turned around and had to pay Crossroads Bank what was left on the loan, which was $23,789.49. Then, we received money from insurance again for the outfit of Petty's truck, which, I apologize, I don't have that exact amount. It was five, right around, roughly five, four to $5,000. His outfit was $7,945.87. I'm sorry. Yeah, we received the money, then I paid the money. $17,738.63 was the outfit. Okay, that's the money we expended for the outfit. We received $17,801 for Petty's outfit. We don't plan for accidents, so we did not budget for that accident. In order to spend the money, you have to appropriate the money. So this money has to be appropriated for this to be spent. I'm not making any sense. Any of you can ask me. I'm just, this is just how it's in my head.
What's the net out-of-pocket for the town after all monies received and all monies that will have to be spent to replace the vehicle?
Hold on, I got this one.
Okay.
So, uh, we found a dealer that had existing inventory. Uh, the new truck, we got a $9900 discount on because it was available, it was a leftover. Uh, so that was about $46,000. Insurance paid most of the outfit, uh, other than about $7,000. So, uh, I think the cost would have been 53,000. Normally buying a brand-new truck, uh, would cost us about 75,000 out-of-pocket if we would buy one. So, uh, the net is somewhere in that, 53,000 for the new truck.
So, but then we, we offset that with the $33,489.17 recovered from insurance?
Well, there was still a balance that had to be paid off. So if I wrecked my car...
It was about $10,000.
Yeah, there was still a balance left, uh, on that.
Okay, so 43, and then also from the recovery of the, of the outfit, which you said was four to 5,000?
Yeah, somewhere around there, so.
So then we're somewhere around 37? And then, was the insur, was there any parts that were able to be recovered from the original vehicle that were reused and then added to it?
Yes, all the parts that were, I made, it was a Ford F-150 that got wrecked. We bought a Ford F-150. Every part that wasn't damaged that could be reused was put back into that truck.
Okay, so all, all told, the accident cost the town somewhere in the neighborhood of 35 to 37,000 dollars?
That's why I was gonna do it, calculate it. I know what you're asking. That's why.
Right, and you're trying to understand what it cost us, right?
The, when, when we say cost, it typically, like, if, if I went out tonight and I wrecked my truck, all right? I have a loan on it, it would have to be paid off by insurance. I would have money left to go buy another vehicle. I'm not gonna be able to replace the vehicle for the difference. So typically, if we were just buying a vehicle, like I said, that would be $75,000 to go get everything all done. So, yes, we may have spent 37, $38,000 on that truck to replace it, but that was better than spending 75,000, if that makes sense.
Right.
Yes, the, the net, but we would have paid to replace that truck in three years.
And the, and the truck that you replaced it with is of newer year?
Yes, uh, it's a 2025, but it was considered a leftover because they're already made it 2026.
Okay, so no miles and...
So, yeah, it was a brand-new truck.
So we get value for that, right?
Yep. So, yeah, brand-new truck, brand-new, five-year, 100,000-mile warranty, uh, and the, all the electronics on it, the, the reason for the outfit, those were all brand-new, so that was, that way those items have a 10-year warranty.
What for the truck? Between 35 and 37, for those actually cost the town that?
And the PD, uh, part of the reason for this, uh, additional appropriation, normally when we purchase a vehicle, we finance it, uh, through the, the lease program, uh, with the bond bank. Uh, in this case, the PD had been very good on their budget over the last three years and actually had money saved up in their cookie jar, uh, to where we were able to buy it outright and not finance and pay interest, so.
So we save money on this?
We, yes, we save, save 10,000 on the truck, we save money on interest. There's, there's a lot of savings that went into, yes, we spent 38,000, but we probably saved 15,000.
Does anyone know is there any possibility that we'll get additional offset from restitution?
That's all.
I don't know, is that something that typically happens or not?
That's all on the courts for the young man that's still in jail.
Nice.
So. That's the best explanation of the cost I can give.
And then, was that typically considered mutual aid since it was outside of our jurisdiction?
Uh, no, that was our pursuit. The crime was committed.
If we damage a vehicle during mutual aid, is that cost assumed by the department that we're helping?
No, that's, mutual aid is just an agreement. We're all here, so.
Same way if they damage one when they're helping us.
Yep.
Yeah, just trying to understand.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So there we go.
Okay, so...
Any questions on that matter?
Anybody have any questions on the resolution 2025-11, additional appropriations? I would entertain a motion to pass.
I would make a motion to approve 2025-11 as presented.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Okay.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-12, transfer of appropriations.
All right, these are transfers, um, between departments and, uh, between categories within the same department. You have the different departments. They may be utilities, uh, miscellaneous, different departments. So we're transferring funds within, with, trans, I don't want to say funds.
Within the cookie jar?
Transferring monies within the cookie jars. Transferring within the same fund. So they'd be like, they're all general fund to general fund. Example, the last one we have is part fund. The part fund had, needed $3,000 in labor, but they had, and they had the money in their utility fund, so we just are transferring over to cover the labor. It's all been appropriated in the budget, it's just being moved around to cover.
So we're changing line items, basically? In, within the same category?
Yep.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025-12.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Now, resolution 2025-13, transfer of funds.
These were funds, um, and I'll just list them real quick. Uh, this sidewalk replacement, as you all know, it's been brought up several times because it was money that was taken out probably about three years ago, $1,758, which left that fund in a negative. It was actually caused by a water leak, and they had to dig up the sidewalk. Uh, the state word accounts audited me, and they asked that I get these funds to zero, told me how to do them, so, um, that one was 1,758. Uh, the water meter replacement fund was short $12,675.60, so we're just transferring from cash operating. Um, the water construction in progress was $2,369. Uh, we're covering that with, or transferring water from cash operating. And then the gas construction in progress was short $166.04. So that will be coming from gas cash operating.
Anyone have any questions?
I make a motion to approve 2025-13.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
You ready, Mel?
I'm ready.
All right. Resolution 2025-14, end-of-year fund transfers.
This is just something we do every year. That way, if we get to the end, end of the year, because we're not done yet, and there's not a lot of time left, you have to advertise for 14 days for appropriations. We got those done. These are just for if we need to make transfers within the same fund. It's not additional appropriations, it's just transfers within the same fund.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2025-14.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsey.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-15, adopting a public meeting policy. This is rules and guidelines for public meetings. Because everyone had a chance to look over these. Anyone have any questions? No?
No.
I entertain a motion to adopt 2025-15.
I'll make the motion.
Can you hear what they are? Can you hear what they are?
Well, let's see.
Is it posted?
It will be posted, it's not been adopted yet. It will be posted every, every meeting, it will be up on the door when you come in.
You wonder why people.
And we'll put it, and we'll put it, when we put it on the website, so they'll have it.
I don't know, be seconded.
Two-seconded.
How many pages is it? We're just.
One second.
About ten.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Now, the fun one. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten, salaries. Chad, this is kind of your baby, would you like to go over it?
Yes, okay, so salary ordinance, uh, we had our special meeting, had a lot of good discussion on. Uh, so, one, our salary ordinance is set up as an ordinance that if we are not changing any governing rules of the ordinance, the ordinance itself does not have to be re-adopted. Same way if we passed the ordinance five years ago and we haven't changed anything, it does not have to be changed. Uh, this year for our salary ordinance, we have no changes to the actual structure, uh, or governing rules of that ordinance. So the only thing that we have, uh, before us tonight are the exhibits. Uh, pursuant to the guidelines in the ordinance, um, we have to, uh, vote on and accept the ordinances, uh, that will be used to govern the year. Uh, so, for example, for the folks. Go ahead.
The exhibits is.
The exhibits, what did I say?
Ordinance.
Sorry, ordinance on the brain. Uh, so the exhibits, for example, exhibit A establishes our pay grades. Exhibit B assigns the positions that we have within the town to a pay grade. So if you are a, uh, just use the thing that I know, a patrol officer, it assigns our patrol officers all go into grade fifteen, making up a number, I guess we pulled up here, Rogers, right there with middle one. It was grade fifteen. So, uh, and then within that grade, it establishes a pay range. In other words, this is the minimum that person can get paid, this is the maximum that person can get paid. Uh, we review these by ordinance, uh, every even-numbered year. So next year, before the salary ordinance gets approved at the end of the year, we will go through and review all of our start rates, our ranges, and make sure that we are competitive as we can be, uh, with other communities of our size, all right? Uh.
And actually for that, we are going to do a study when it comes out.
So, yeah, uh, Accelerate Indiana Municipalities does a study, uh, on the same year, every year, where they will send out a questionnaire to communities all over the state, uh, almost every community, and then they will break out that information and send it to us by population size of a town. And then that way we know towns in our range that have this staff, this is the, what those places pay. So that way, it saves us money doing a wage study to find out what's comparable, uh, amongst other communities. Um, so then we have, uh, other ordinances, we have an ordinance that dictates.
Exhibit.
Uh, sorry, sorry, uh, exhibit, uh, where did it go? So like we have an exhibit that lists out the holidays that we recognize and what day they are recognized on. So if a holiday falls on a Wednesday and we move it to a Friday, it governs that list. Uh, we have an exhibit that, uh, dictates, uh, how the town council members are paid out of what fund, all things that are required. And so, uh, at the end of the day, we have to go through, update those exhibits. Uh, we apply pay rate increases for any of our folks. This year, we budgeted a three percent increase, so that three percent increase is included in the exhibit that assigns the pay rate to the individual, so. Uh, so, yeah, that's the overview of how it works. And after our discussion at our special meeting, we have taken all the feedback, updated those exhibits and sent them out to the council members for us to discuss. Anything, vote on it tonight.
Anyone have any questions on the salary ordinance, exhibits?
We, uh, we have in there about a planner on the thirty-two hours.
So we have, in the pay grades, we have created a planner and assigned it a pay grade. Uh, much like we had for two years, we had a pay grade and position established for a town manager. So even though people are not in those positions.
Right.
The, it is, it exists, if we fill it this year, then it is, it's there. Yep.
Great.
It is there, the rules are established.
Well, I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten.
Uh, we're, it would be to accept the exhibits for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten.
To approve the exhibits for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten.
I'd make the motion to approve the exhibits for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Uh, before we move on, uh, there's one thing that, uh, for the additional rates is for our Pazer study-certified individual. Uh, we've established a rate of one additional dollar per hour. Uh, I would like to, uh, make a motion that we back-pay that individual for the year, uh, back to the date that they got certified.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Why is it competing?
Well, if he has.
He's certified.
Oh, I'm not certified.
Are you certified or something?
I'm certified.
All right, so now we're in public hearing. Okay, now I will close the regular town council meeting and open a public hearing for establishing the collection of tree limbs and branches. This is an ordinance that just basically says the size of pile you can have, which is a maximum allow, allowable pile size of three foot by three foot by three foot. Uh, nothing larger than four inches in diameter. And make place one pile of limbs at the curve at a time for pickup. This essentially is just trying to curb, uh, people from hiring someone to take a tree down in your yard, putting it out and wanting the town to pick it up and dispose of it.
We started, just for informational purposes, we started in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, for some of you that might have been here in nineteen ninety-one, there was an ice storm and lots of limbs and everything down. So the council at that time purchased a chipper and went around and was cleaning up limbs. And that's what it was started for, to clean up storm and wind damage when limbs fall out. In the past few years, it has come to the attention that, as Brian just mentioned, uh, people are hiring folks to take down large trees or many small trees and making huge piles out there. And our guys are taking all day to clean up a couple of piles when they can be cleaning up a lot of piles used to. So that's kind of where this has come from.
This is a public hearing, if anyone has anything they'd like to say?
I would just like to know if conversations and discussions don't take place at these meetings regarding ordinances, policies and so on that you guys vote on, when do they take place?
What was the question?
She was asking what we talk about. I think we've had this one on for, what, three months?
Yeah, this will be the third reading of this one.
No, I just meant in general, I mean, somebody just wrote a policy and you voted on it with no discussion, no, the public was given no opportunity to even see it. And then we were told, after it's adopted, it'll be posted. So as a general rule, I'm asking if those conversations aren't happening in front of the public, so we understand your reasoning, when are they happening?
If someone brings something to the, if one of the council members brings something to me as the president, I take it to the lawyer. I have a discussion individually, no more than two, I just want to get very clear with other members, if they feel like it's something that's, needs to be done, then we contact the lawyers and have an ordinance drawn up. And then it gets presented in the public.
And then you just vote on it?
Well, we have, like this one's had three readings, this, this is a public hearing, this.
I had referred to the policy in the past that when we asked, we didn't know what was in it, we were told we'd have to wait till it's posted online or posted on the law. I, I, I mean, that just, it just lacks transparency and it creates a lack of trust.
Well, we started talking about this back in, like, August.
She's talking, she's talking about the public meeting and just policy. She just was.
But this, this public hearing specifically is regarding this.
We understand that. Yes, but this meeting is for the people's business and we are the people. And at the end of the day, you're either elected to serve the people or serve yourselves. And if you're here to serve the people, you will accommodate the people. So we're asking you, what is in the policy that you just passed with no discussion? That's all we're asking. I think everyone here in the room is interested.
You go to the polls, this is what you remember. I went, well, not go through these papers.
It's what we just spoke about.
They're like in.
The size of the pile.
Well, they're, they're asking about something else. They're asking about something that's not.
And then, like, I had no discussion with anybody about the tree limbs, but then we get the policy, we read it and then we do it on the computer. For most things, there's not, there's discussion with the people that brought it up and created the policy with the lawyers. And then we kind of read what's up, set the agenda.
They're not gonna answer what you're asking. They're gonna scurry around.
I, I did, I answered, no.
I, I understand the process, but do you understand that from the perspective of the public who is impacted by policy, there's no transparency there?
So don't cry when it's on social media.
So, I, I'm just gonna, again, and this is, this is a reminder, I, I'm gonna be the one that bears the cross on this one. Unless it's a public hearing, as we're in right now, for the, this particular ordinance, we are elected to do the business of the town. The public is invited to come to our meetings and watch us do the job that we are elected to do. That, that is, that is how the law works. The ordinance that we passed basically just codifies the state's law on the open door. That's, that's the, that, that's how.
You're not here to represent the people.
If that's all it was, why is this saying?
We are, we are likely.
Okay, this is a public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash six. Does anyone want to speak on ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash six?
How's it gonna change from what we've done in the past as far as opening forums, as far as questioning?
This, this not pertaining to ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash six.
Okay.
We've come so far. But now you see the arrogance.
So who's gonna pay, who pays for limb pickup, the town or the utility department, like, who shares that expense?
Exactly, utility department.
What does it cost us?
Whatever the man-hours are, equipment maintenance, all those things.
Are we using the same chipper we had in nineteen ninety-one?
Matter of fact, we are.
Yes.
So are we reserving money to replace said chipper, chipper, or are we advising the town that eventually when chipper breaks, we're done?
Well, there's always equipment replacement.
Right.
And who pays for that, the taxpayers or you guys?
Nope, utility users.
Do you have conversation to add in there because you keep sighing and, huh, huh, and, huh, and, oh, professional? So if, I mean, you're the town manager, so if you have something to add in, please do, so.
I do not speak unless I'm recognized.
And right now, we are in a public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-five.
Well, do you think it's appropriate for her to behave like that?
I, I.
Come on, she's done it in several meetings. I'm a professional.
I'm, if you wanna redirect it to the.
No one has anything else to say about ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash six?
My question is.
Ask about the ordinance. And I'm too.
And I'm asking you, what does this service cost the town?
I don't have that dollar amount on my.
It will, it costs approximately seventy-five dollars an hour.
Okay, what was, what's the total?
How many hours do you spend in that?
Well.
If we've been doing this since nineteen.
The town manager should be able to answer it first.
If we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-one, should we have some estimate of what it costs annually to provide this service to the town? And what it's going to cost us to replace this now, what, thirty-year-old, thirty-five-year-old piece of equipment? That probably isn't gonna last for shit. I mean, are, these are fair questions, right?
They are.
And we should have the answers to these, right?
We're, we're not, we're not doing anything that's gonna establish any more cost. Actually, what we're doing with this ordinance is controlling the cost to stop the individuals that are taking advantage of the process having, oh, I know leaf and limb pickup is next week, I'm gonna have this company come out, cut the tree down. Well, a thousand dollars to cut a tree down and two thousand dollars to haul away. Just leave it up by the curb, the town will haul away for me because leaf and limb pickups come out. So this is to stop the abuse of a service that we offer to make it to where it doesn't cost as much and is more cost-effective for the citizens.
With that being said, is there something in the ordinance that, that we're speaking of here to where, like, if we see someone using this service to take care of the whole forest, that that person can be fined for abusing?
There's something in there on that.
They did just pick it up. So, we keep sleeping on the street, not picking up, do we have an ordinance officer that will, like, make the line and make sure those trees are moved?
Yes, it's banning engineering.
So we do have an ordinance officer?
Banning engineering is contracted through our code enforcement.
Okay. Do the taxpayers pay for us to maintain this machine and this equipment?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, not, not necessarily taxpayers, but the user fees, utility department is user fees.
Who pays for utilities?
The people. It's not property taxes, it is, it's.
Free-funded.
So it's free-funded, okay, so, so then I guess my question would be, how many holes do we, do we think that this, this, this service is? At seventy-five dollars? How many, how many homes do you think in an average week you're, you're chipping up, when's that?
Yeah, again, we do it the first and third Mondays.
Right.
And it's about seventy-five to eighty percent of the town puts out limbs.
Yes.
And how frequently have we seen trees out there, is it every month that this happens, it's not, every month that it?
This summer it was.
Every month?
Somebody would cut down a tree, somebody would.
We had one that cut down a whole bunch and they had twelve stacks all around their property and thought we were gonna pick them up.
Oh, my gosh.
See, it just seems like this is something that people should be paying for on their own. I, it seems strange to me that we even go to this extent and we spread this out over the whole town to all of the people who are using the utility.
Well, that's, that's, that was what it was for, like I said originally.
It was for an act of God.
Yes.
I mean, it makes sense if it lives in the middle of Main Street or it's.
Right.
The road.
Well, or you got lemon or your backyard, it blew out from the tornado or whatever.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But when you decide, or I decide that I'm gonna cut down that big oak tree out there and I'm just gonna put the limbs out on the street and I make a pile that's like four feet high, six feet high, twelve, fourteen, eighteen feet long, then I expect those guys to come and spend all day chipping those up.
Do other districts do this?
Yes, that's where most, a lot of it came from.
Nodozel does it, with the street department, that goes around and does it once a week.
I know those, my hometown, they actually, and I know that there's certain regulations and guidelines you have to follow for mulch for parks and things, but I know my hometown actually takes the, the chips and uses it for mulch for the parks and for landscaping. Is that something that we could perhaps look at to help the Parks Department? Or is, I know there's very strict guidelines.
Yeah, we can't use it for the playground equipment, it has to be playground-certified mulch.
Right, but what about, like, landscaping, could it be, you know, mulched up into a finer after? Could it be, you know, mulched up into a finer after?
Well, we have to buy another piece.
Does it in a very coarse?
Can we end up taking those out to like Muslim ones or somewhere recycled?
Usually it's local. We got a couple of local people, like farmers and, or like people with large farms or big, big ones, so we take them out there.
Cool.
They are recycled.
Brian, it's always been a rule, that size, what is different about what you're, is it what you just ever, an actual written?
Size was smaller.
Decided to keep people from doing what they were doing.
It was originally six foot by six foot by six foot. That's a fairly large pile when you think about it.
Yeah.
And there was no limit on how many piles you could have at your residence. So in there, I, I could, I do pile size a little bit smaller, maybe three, get up one pile.
At a time.
At a time. But there is a, there's a fee in there where if somebody had bigger piles or something like that, they can pay a fee for us to come take up the larger piles, but it's on our schedule when, you know, when we can get to it. Thank you.
So is there a clause in this that says if we do have an act of God, that you're going to use the chipper to help those people?
Yes.
There's a clause in there?
Yep.
Cause there's a lot of old trees in this town.
Has anyone else had any questions, comments for the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing.
We got two more.
We got two more.
Yeah, I have to close each one of them separately. Hold your head. Now we resume the regular town council meeting. Load on these or do we do the third reading? The third reading? All right, I'm going to close the town council meeting and open a public hearing for drainage ordinance 2025-7. This is just mirroring the county's drainage ordinance that we have been asked to do, so this continues through. Anyone have any questions, comments for the public hearing? Okay, I will close the public hearing, resume the town council meeting. I will close the town council meeting, open a public hearing for ordinance 2025-8. This is a right-of-way permit and fee schedule. This is just so when an internet company comes to town and wants to run, what was one of the big ones we've had here lately?
Sixty-five thousand feet.
Sixty-five thousand feet of cable through our town through the right-ofways. This is so they have to put everything back the way they found it. They have to do a street cut. They put the, the grass easements back the way they found them. That is what this ordinance is for. Anyone have any questions or comments for the public hearing? This time I will close the public hearing and resume the regular town council meeting. Okay, old business, we're gonna revisit all three again. Ordinance. Yeah. Ordinance 2025-6. Limb ordinance, this would be the third reading. Third and final reading. Anyone on the council have any questions? This time I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025-6.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 2025-7, drainage ordinance, third read. Anyone on the council members have any questions, comments on that one? Nope, I will entertain a motion, motion to approve.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Ordinance 2025-8, right-of-way permit fees, third reading. Any council members have any, how much questions on it? I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2025-8.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
He's been removed from the agenda. Department reports, please.
Okay, everybody should have my list. Start with this P D update. Officer Jackson graduated from the academy last night. Welcome back, Officer Jackson. Reserve Officer John Bendup will be retiring on one January of twenty twenty-six. Uh, and Officer Nevins during the last period, uh, during this period, completed the advanced S R O, uh, training for the position over at the school. Go to vehicles, the twenty twenty Explorer, uh, we had a cracked windshield. The, didn't realize it is even tipped and then the cold weather, that cold night we had, as soon as you turn on the heat, it went. Obviously, we checked the insurance. It was cheaper to replace deductible, the deductible was more than what the, the windshield cost. Um, so that's been replaced. Uh, the twenty seventeen Explorer that had the gas leak, I'm sorry, the exhaust leak, we were able to get it repaired by. That was huge savings. Uh, just some general information, the new ballistic vest, um, came in that we had ordered. And then obviously the rifle plates came in that were from the, um, grant that we received. So graciously from the South Madison County Foundation. If you look at our reports, A, you'll notice that some of them are a little different. The C A D now has a new program. Nothing fancy unless you're just a geek like reports, but it documents, it puts it all together a lot easier for me now. So it'll start looking a little different. Just a quick summary, we had three hundred and thirty-three calls for service. And for this month, we had, uh, twelve cases that were opened and investigated. That doesn't necessarily mean that there was a charge filed. That just means that there was something that we actually started investigation and the case was open and rolling. And we submitted eight criminal charges this month based on all the calls that we had. As you see, they'll start looking a little bit different and it'll be a little bit different information. The January meeting, I will have the end of year report for twenty twenty-five and you'll have a little bit more breakdown.
Where, where are we at call-wise this year so far compared to last year?
We're just, uh, compared to last year at this time, I don't know exactly, but we're.
Close to.
Yeah.
Close to last year.
We're, we're about two hundred shy, I think, what we were actually, very, very close. I didn't really total, total call count for the year. If I'm not mistaken, we're at like four thousand six hundred and forty-six or something like that. Off the top of my head.
Chad, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, does that totally include only calls for service within lapel or does that include mutually as well?
I'm sorry, what was that, please?
Does that totally include mutually or just within the town?
That is any call that an officer was on, whether that be self-initiated, a dispatch call or mutually to, uh, fire, E M S, that includes all of the calls.
Well, we're down, so we're in the right direction.
Do you have a breakdown of how many were in the town and how many were mutually?
How many were mutually called for service? I can't find here. Uh, I don't, I'm third one here, but I don't have off the top of my head what it is. And depends on what you're calling mutually, because mutually can also mean multiple different things compared to what it is in the, and the report, breakdown vice.
Our, our officers go wherever Central Dispatch sends them.
Absolutely, I just think that people would maybe like to know how much activity is actually happening within the lapel versus how much activity our officers are doing elsewhere.
Yes, I can tell you without numbers, I can, I can tell you this, the majority of our calls are within the town of Lapel. But again, if we have an officer who, county eagles, and I know we've brought this up before in past meetings, if we have an officer who is called, dispatched out, he's gonna go. If there's a county officer who is needing backup, in today's day and age, we never let anybody go on a call that could be dangerous by themselves. The same as those departments also come into our town to back us up if we, we require it. But the majority of our count, uh, calls, I can make this available, leave it on the table when anybody wants to look at it. Majority of our calls though do initiate within the town limits. If you want an actual breakdown off the top of my head, it is not an accurate account, but I'm going to say that eighty percent of them are, our calls, twenty percent are mutually, whether that be fire, E M S, assisting.
Coroner, I mean, you go help them.
Well, those are usually underneath a different, different number. Or we may have a, an ambulance run, we may assist, uh, with traffic on interstate. We don't take the call, it's not our call to work the accident, but we also have to help those other agencies with, with traffic so that they can work it. So that's what that is.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I just wonder, that's something that wouldn't be beneficial for you to bring to the next meeting with your annual report. Simply from the standpoint of so much of our operating budget goes to the police department, it would be beneficial for the people to be able to see the actual value to them within your jurisdiction. That's all, but of course I'm not judge.
You want transparency?
The members are available, if the council would like that to be posted somewhere, council directly to do that, I will do that.
If you, if you. If it would, uh.
Sorry.
If, if it wouldn't be too bad to get that, but then I don't know if there's a way to get on the flip side of that just for the full transparency, how many calls we have mutually come to us? So, and if that's possible.
I can tell you how it's broke down and it's counted in the C A D. C A D, if you don't know, C A D is our computerated dispatch. We don't always, I'm gonna rephrase that, we don't know what type of the call is. Sometimes they put it differently, sometimes they don't. I can go through and I can tell you what's on here. Most of the time I can say, okay, I know with this call line, if we get it, that usually means we're assisting an, another, another agency. Doesn't always be that. So sometimes they, we, it may be an agency assist call and they, they put it for, um, assist police, or next time it may just be listed as assist. It doesn't actually break that down.
Right.
But yes, it goes through and it, it still provides a better, well, how many total is there? I don't know, if you look here, off the top of my head, but there's probably twenty or twenty-five columns that breaks down how many call types that we had during that month, um, and what they were for. And that's those, what's in the C A D, what's available. The easy ones, we are on all share, on SharePoint, I can provide it and we can go back maybe the way we were. And those were put out to the public for view prior to, um, the reports are there, I don't care where they go, I just need the council to grab that and that's what I want.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, planning, that's me. Basically, we had planning procedure review, one address that had already been, set years ago. All we had in planning.
Utilities. One thing before Brandon gets up here, um, during our last snow event, we damaged our large, uh, push box, push box. For lack of a better term. And we need to, we've had that probably twenty-two years. And we have a quote for a new one, forty-two hundred dollars to replace the one, and I would recommend that.
What does it, what equipment does it bill on that?
It goes on the backhoe, it fits over the shut, over the bucket of the backhoe. So it, it's what, sixteen foot?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve foot. It's the one that we use, like up down the main streets.
I just didn't know what, when it was going on, I just didn't know if that one or different box.
And you can look at it.
They only have that for, yeah, like twenty-some years. It was kind of bent already and then it's, I walked, snuck up on somebody and it got bent a little bit more. So heating it up and pulling it's not gonna make it any better. But, I mean, for the ones we had, the last one, forty-two hundred bucks, it wasn't that bad. I, I found two places I had them in stock. The forty-two hundred was the lowest, the other quote I got was from Reynolds and they wanted nine thousand six hundred dollars for one.
Forty-two hundred, it doesn't sound that bad.
No, it didn't sound that bad. Yeah, it's hard to find one because obviously we're getting a bunch of snow, so.
And we will more than likely send that one down to the auction in March. To get maybe a couple of dollars out of it.
Maybe, yeah.
Um.
Take care of that or let Brandon do the reporting?
Well, we can do the report and do that later, whatever.
All right, we're here on this now. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the forty-two hundred dollars for the new push box for snow.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes. Can you make this one last twenty-two years?
I hope so, that'd be planned. There's not much to it, it's just steel blocks.
Well, you got one to last twenty-two years.
Yeah. Um, all right, so, uh, Pearls came out, worked on thirteen wells. Thirteen wells, they replaced the pump on it. And then they cleaned it, hyper-coated it, all that, it's back up and running. We got maybe a little bit more flow out of it, but it'll give us, we started running it yesterday, so it'll take a few days to try to figure out what our iron levels on, are on it. I don't imagine they'll change too much, but now we can at least start blending the two wells together. So we can try to get those iron levels to check. Bastin Logan came out, looked at the, did an inspection on the filter media in the filter. Everything looked good there. Um, they have evidence on how we should change the chlorine, the feed into the, uh, into the filter. We, we've done that and that's just another process, it'll take some time to kind of figure out where we need to be with it. Other than that, we're in December, so all of our water testing for the year up to this point, some of the big ones like our back D test, um, our T T H M's H A five, which is our dissection byproducts, the chlorine residuals, our nitrates, and then our P F O S test we had to do this year. All those testing for the year came back with big compliance items. So, other than that, nothing big major going on, hopefully it doesn't freeze tonight.
I think it's going with him.
I think it'll be in early, yeah.
Hopefully it'll dry off.
We'll see. That's all I got, unless you got something for me?
How is our salt supply doing?
Just had forty-four ton delivered earlier this week.
P triple?
I've got another, I got another forty-four ton that I can order at any time and we can go above twenty percent of what I bid. So I think we're looking like we're gonna be in good shape. I'm kind of hoping this weather's in like a line out like a lamb, you know? So we'll see what happens, I'm not eating my hopes up, but we'll see.
Congrats on passing your test.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Well, I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Parks?
Uh, the only thing I have, my four-year term is up, so I'm requesting that you reappoint me to the park board for the next four-year term. My husband said don't, but.
Does and Jane, uh, we did it. We did that. I'll make the motion to reappoint you to the park board.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes, just for Brandon.
Lindsay. Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Probably didn't have much in the way of parks.
Not right now, too much. Thank you.
I have a quick question for her. I know in the past I have donated flags for the parks for like the town and stuff.
Yes.
How are we on that aspect? Is, did we ever get something set up to where people can donate to the parks for? How are we on that aspect? Is, did we ever get something set up to where people can donate to the parks board?
We, yeah, so the Parks Department has a donation fund.
Okay, good.
That, yeah, it's already been created, so anyone can donate, turns out at any time.
As far as the status of the flags or condition of the flag, you touch them or am I doing?
I think we just ordered some more Indiana flags. Um, I think we're going to pretty good on them.
I think so. I mean, you're welcome. You're welcome anytime if you want to donate.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, thank you. It all takes somebody to wait for them.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Where's your friend? We take them.
And so, yeah, utility guys do all the raising of the flags for us.
Okay.
Anything else?
I know at one time there was conversation, this was a few years ago, about doing like a community day, we do mulch spreading and and I know you do some like help from schools and stuff to do that in the past. Have you given any additional thoughts on that?
Uh, so the last time we did mulch for the playgrounds, the company, we actually hired a company to do it and it was cheaper than us buying the mulch and having someone spread it.
I remember that.
Yes, so that is the plan for this year as well. And then the middle school has a big outreach program in May
and they send a bunch of kids out and do a bunch of cleanup, not just in the parks, but all around the town. So they've been the biggest contributor.
Awesome, okay.
Thank you, Gary. R D C.
Uh, we did not have a quorum this evening, uh, so our next regularly scheduled meeting will be January.
Sixteenth, twentieth, fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Let's keep naming the numbers, Gary, you're going to hit one of them.
I'll hit one of them in a minute.
Like a powerball. Uh, and we are still, uh, legal did determine that the appointee that we are missing uh, needs to be appointed by this council, so if we have anybody that has reached out wanting to be on the R D C, we do have an opening, uh, and if anybody's interested, uh, please send your, uh, resume or letter or whatever you want to send to express your interest to info@lapeldean.com.
Can I ask, is there a attendance requirement to be on that committee? That's part of the guy. Perhaps there should be, that should be something that's passed because many times people are coming over here and there's no forum. It's not really fair to the public who's expecting to come here to be seen. And so if people cannot commit to that, when you can run a forum every month, it needs to, that's, that's something that really needs to be discussed and put into an ordinance or something as a requirement. It is, it, yeah, for all the boards. Um, it's not right to people. And that's really how you're served. Contrary to Winkler.
Administration.
Thank you, council members. Um, I want to recognize our staff for the great work, um, they did during the recent snow events. Many people have reached out and actually stopped by town hall as well to compliment our staff on the quality of that job. And, um, it's always nice to hear positive feedback. Um, we're also contributing to several families this holiday season, and I know many of you has donated, have donated as well, so thank you. Um, I want to particularly recognize Teresa and Officer D S for spearheading those efforts and getting us organized to make sure these families can have a nice Christmas and covered, full of groceries. Um, Brandon did a great job covering all the work we've completed on our water delivery system, so I'm not going to repeat that. Um, we've also previously though talked about infrastructure improvements and we anticipate being able to present more details in a proposed phase one to you at the January meeting. I'm bringing with, uh, Mr. Ketchum, England on that as well as our team at Chrome. So that we also have with the plan, um, an outline of how the financing might look. Finally, we received notification from N dot that federal funds are going to be used to replace the bridge on State Road thirty-two over Stony Creek. The project's currently scheduled to begin the summer of twenty twenty-eight and the notification indicates they're going to make efforts to not conflict with the school's schedule. As soon as updates are available, um, those will be provided. I don't have anything else this evening, so unless you have questions, I, thank you.
Alright, anybody else stand? No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our treasurer report.
All I have is a memorandum of executive session November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Please, we need to approve that or just acknowledge that we. Okay, uh, I will make the motion to approve the memorandum for the executive session November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Remove the claims. We haven't a minute? No, we haven't a minute. Everybody had a chance to look over them. Anyone have any questions on them?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
This is worth coming.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Um, as some of you may or may not know, earlier this month, we lost a member of this council, had been on this council for twenty years, served the town well, friend of mine for over forty years. And Mr. Pearson always had the knack of, every, every once in a while throwing a no vote in. So in honor of Tony Pearson, no.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Prove the allowance docket. That's simply a breakdown of what's in the claims. Anyone have any questions on those?
Motion to approve the allowance docket as presented for November.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Council, number comments and concerns? Anyone on the council?
I just want to, Mr. Ketchal's here tonight, just want to reiterate that we are putting together a plan to start doing, looking at doing seventeen percent of our water main replacement, uh, hopefully to start soon. It'll probably take a year to get off your thing, all the money together, maybe even late in twenty-six. Um, as we have studied, Mr. Ketchal has studied the system, uh, we have found a bunch of one-inch mains, a bunch of two-inch mains, uh, and some looping. Those that don't know, we're going to add a large section of eight-inch line to help with the loop situation, so. Uh, but that'll all be coming. We're, that's what our town manager mentioned a while ago, that we're looking at how to get it financed and what kind of, uh, rates or anything that we'll have to add on to, to get that done, but we've got to start getting that done. We didn't realize there was that much two-inch line in the ground ourselves. Go ahead.
Anyone else on the council?
Is that what you found, what those nut checks?
No, that was sewer.
That was sewer.
That was sanitary. This is water.
Sorry.
This is, that is the other end. After it goes through the house. Sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, our next regular scheduled meeting is Thursday, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, seven P M. We're here at the Lions Club. Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.